Do you want me to reach it for you?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Might need your assistance.
Good evening everyone, welcome to the Doug's meeting on Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. We're going to call in to the board at 7:01. And let's see if we can believe why she was such a little bitch.
Listen to the choir of the United States of America. In true republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And our last one, you too. We do have a Zoom connection and after here it's monitoring. If anybody has any questions, you can send them there or comments. So we'll mutate whatever we do broadcast. And we do have student representatives at my school, some little campaign.
Hello, how are you?
Oh, yeah.
So at the school right now, we've been going on with the hybrid model and it's been going very well. All the teachers are kind of getting into it more than none. And I know I could be used to be a little bit confused with the due dates and assignments and it's kind of clustered. But now everything's kind of under control. I think all the students are finally in the groove of everything, so we're going with it too. The, some of the sports teams are still going, so soccer, all field hockey and cross country are also running, which is good. So all that is still their opportunities to play. On October 26th and 29th, Christine is going to be dressing up in Halloween costumes to greet the elementary and primary students off the buses. So that should be pretty exciting. I know Christine is very excited for that with everyone. The TV production class started their first assignment. So hopefully in a few weeks, we'll be seeing the Tiger TV episode that all the students get excited for here. I know on October 28th, there's going to be an open house meeting virtually. So that'll be in their streams. Looking forward to that a little while. And students, either juniors or seniors trying to join NHS. They have interviews coming up in a few weeks. So I know a few juniors and seniors that are trying to get back into that, so. Right now, let's, oh, all this morning, are there any questions, Jennifer?
How's college applications going?
The applications are going pretty well right now. I'm, right now, maybe still my top option, so I've been going along with that process. I just took the CFA, which is the physical test about a week ago. Went pretty well. Now I'm on the medical exams, which is just a lot of, a lot of paperwork and. Yeah, and then there's trying to get a congressional nomination. So I have to do a few more applications for that, but, and that's going pretty well. It's not stressful, but we've been through it, so.
Goes fast?
Yeah, it does.
Good luck with that. I went through that with one of my kids.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
It is. It's very long.
And that was the beautiful party for our newest volunteer.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anything else? Okay, you can come over and join us. Thank you. Have a good night. Take care.
Number one, is anyone here have a public comment or anything to share with us? Number one, any agenda?
You do not have to leave on the Zoom yet.
Right, any old business? Number one, any new business? Well, since we're ready, we'll move on to the super junior part.
Good evening, everyone. Last time we met, we had a principal's report out. And Mr. Park was unable to be present. So I had her come today so she could give an update on the first month of the office students support services. And I know there were some questions about the added position that we have for middle school special education. So hopefully she'll be able to answer all those questions.
Yes, I may wait till my phone, but I, I don't. So first, I want to give a huge thank you to the teachers. General education, special education, guidance counselors, rest and counselors, therapists. Everybody has been absolutely incredible. Certainly been a different sort of start to the year. And I think that the social emotional piece has really been on the forefront for everybody. And our, our teachers all around, as well as our counselors, are working together to, to help the kids and to help each other, which is very huge and important. So just want to give an enormous shout out to them. It's definitely nothing that I've ever seen in my career and hope to never see again. But at the same time, they are doing a beautiful job. So just want to let you know you have an amazing group of teachers. As far as the office of students support services, the way we went into this was like, you know, all of the kids. The kids that have special needs had the option of, of hybrid. They had the option of remote. And some of the students had the option of what we call cohort C. So what cohort C is, is the concept of students who, due to high levels of need, have the option to come in in person four days a week. Just because you qualify, so that does not mean that they necessarily have to come in. Their entire concern is well filled in, and we understand that. But that is an option. Reason I love to talk about it tonight is simply because there has been a little confusion around that. Where, you know, you know, the rumor mill, how, how some people have thought, okay, my, my child's on the P D movement for this week. That's not the case. The Department of Education did put a criteria. And basically what that criteria is based on is the idea of kids that have specific disabilities, two or more services that are outside of the classroom. They fall into the category of L homelessness, a combination of such, VCF involvement, or like that. So what we did was we used hard data as well as pieces of an IEP to make determinations around how a student will implement for the cohort C for snowplains. As the days go on and the weeks go on, there are students that are in trouble needing a program. So what we do is we take the hard data and we take a real good honest look at it and have reconvene of, of teams and talked about whether or not the curriculum and the hybrid model for kids who aren't in cohort C is realistic. For some, some kids have had to come back, but there is criteria around it. So I guess my question is, do you have questions about that? About the cohort C piece? None? And it will continue to evolve as, as all of this changes.
What if, what if, actually, I know you already answered it, but what if a family really felt there was a need that like they really should be in school to be more than today, it's like there's a lot of stuff in the ground, but they didn't have an IEP or more than these sort of things?
So according to the Department of Education, the label criteria is for a student to be in for that four days a week in person, they would have to be on IEP and meet these specific criteria. So for students that are not on, on IEP or don't meet that high level of need at this time, that would not be an option at this time. Next are reconvene meetings. So we have been running reconvene meetings for all students on IEPs. Simultaneously, we've been making up any meeting for a student on 504 plan that did not have a meeting in the spring. So there's been a little catch up. At the same time, we felt that it was very important to have reconvene meetings for all students to make sure that we had an understanding of where they were, make sure that the parents had an understanding of what we were doing. And then we have data collection to make sure the kids are successful. Six months out of school is a very long time for kids. So, you know, we had to sort of get our finger on the pulse of things. So, so we're, we're doing that. That should be over shortly. Again, huge shout out to the teachers and they're very patient with that. All right, so the last piece of it is the evaluation process. In the spring, we had to halt the evaluation process. Reason being, we cannot have a formal testing process through our remote or tele practice. Let's call it platform. So we had to stop it. There were agreements with families in order to do that. And now we, this summer, started back up. We did psychological testing for kids as well as academic. And now we're in the process of finishing up the speech and language as well as the OT and PT testing. So we're, we're almost caught up. Again, some of those reconvene meetings that we've been holding, we've also been holding free area evaluations from the spring as well as annual meetings from the spring. So, you know, it's, parents have been extremely patient and understanding, so that's been wonderful. Let's see what else I have. Excuse me. Tier focus monitoring. So I'm sure you all remember the audit from about three years ago. Now, what used to be the mid-set review is called tier focus monitoring. It's just a fancy term from the mid-set review. And I have uploaded everything to the Department of Education website for that process. They should be coming out around January 18th or doing everything via Zoom by January 18th. I'm not sure yet. And now to satisfy that process, because of our level of success through the audit, we do not have to do a record review, nor do we have to do a great deal of reviews that we had last. So sort of got out of that, which is great. Then the last thing I have is just to tell you about some cancellations. Team I D O T is canceled for the school year. So Team I D O T was our high school program. They're basically allowed students in our SARS program, SHC program to participate in different extracurricular activities with kids from Rapid, Oxbridge, Oakdale, and surrounding towns. And because of COVID, we unfortunately can't do that this year. The other thing is unified sports. Obviously, we know sports have taken on a whole different field. You know, at this time, the purpose of safety, anything that it's best to hold on that. And then as far as our, our annual Special Olympics, we're still holding out hope for that. So we're going to continue to, to just pray that that's a possibility in there. So that, that is what I have. What can I introduce to you?
I think at the last meeting, I had a question about sort of this status of how we can update from that because we were approving a petition for a special treatment. I was going to, we kind of hoping to, from a, until, and I remember thinking the next order is tax break.
Yep.
We approved the initial petition we prepared for it. But, you know, I'm happy with, if they have the greater base for medical spread, he started straight, but I was hoping to be fit for it. And then you kind of like save the fair, because I know that he was spread when he was thin for.
I can't wear.
What are you talking about? And the past tense, but.
Yeah. No, absolutely. I'll answer the L question first now and talk about the safety of ours. So as far as L one, at that time, there was an amount of students that qualified for the category of L that required assistance through a particular set of tests that they have called L E D A. Okay, so these students, basically, they're on different levels. According to the levels, that allows us to determine how much service a student might be in, in that area. At that time, we had a certain amount of students and a certain amount of services. What ended up happening was in the late spring, right before school ended, they participated in testing. When we received the results, three of those kids tested off and then one of the kids ended up moving. So what ended up happening with that was obviously the need that we had was not present. Then what ended up happening, little story for you here. So then what ended up happening was our teacher, Rochelle Brandlson, moved to the primary school and the student who had moved moved back to Douglas. Because, we can love this tale. So because of the student's level of need, we thought we were going to need another teacher to accommodate the amount of service. Once we went through everything with the scheduling and like that, it shows that we in fact did not need that for its particular student. And as I told you before, we were down to the students. So that's where that came from, okay? Makes sense? All right, so as far as the status, things are much better. Again, thank you so much for your support. Things, for lack of a better term at this time, are back to normal or as normal as they can be in this level of insanity. Most importantly, Laura is back and she's back healthy. And that's the most important thing, you know, and I think, I think that's what we all wanted last year. It's what I mean, back healthy and she is. So that obviously has been something that has really brought us back to that place that we needed to be administratively. As far as Sky, thank God we have her, you know, it, it, it's a position that we needed. It's a position that we will continue to need, no doubt. I will, I will say, you know, I, I always try to project. I always try to look at it a couple of years. And with our current situation, you know, looking at the developmental progress of our little guys and, and, and all of the things that we're trying so hard to do to educate them at a time when we don't have the control over that education that we always did. You know, you do wonder how is this going to impact the kids in the future? And I think that for, for Sky, you know, it, this, what you guys, you know, accepted and allowed and supported has allowed a very massive revive between allowing Sky to support primary and elementary and letting Laura support middle school and high school. And really hone in and give some good fair attention to each school and individualized attention to kids. So, so things are a lot better, you know? And again, now we have that more attention to L, which allows me to focus more on this student support piece all around. So, thank you again. Great, thank you. Anything else?
Can I ask where we are with the middle school spent position?
Absolutely, yep.
Interview tomorrow?
Interview tomorrow. Interview starts at 2:30.
Excellent.
We have four candidates. Eliminating people without certification. So we have, we have a panel of two special education teachers, one general. It was supposed to be one, one special education teacher, but one of them pushed themselves on me, so I said, okay, I'll allow it. So it's two special education teachers, one general education teacher, Mr. Galaney and myself. And we're gonna, we're gonna go through the interview and hopefully find the best person.
Great, thank you. Awesome.
Thank you. Ready?
Thank you.
All right, next, thank you.
Let's go talk briefly about the food service program and an update. Back in September, I talked about a couple of financial liabilities that we turned on athletics, preschool and food service program. And we have the first two covered. The last one is the food service program. I'm just giving a quick overview, we're then turning over to Courtney and Lisa. The more I delve into it, the more I realize how complex and difficult it is to understand. But just as a quick overview, when we started looking at numbers, we knew that it was going to cost us over a thousand dollars a day to run our food service program. That was staffing, supplies and materials. We were being able to cover that in a typical year that we had 100% of the kids in five days a week. We became concerned, which is why we're here again, when four days a week, we have 40% of the kids in attendance. And then on Wednesdays, we had sale. In mid-September, now federal government extended the, we're gonna read it, we're gonna get the C-list summer meals program, which allowed the schools to feed all students, which was awesome. But that was supposed to go from mid-September through December 31st or if the federal government ran out of funding. Couple of weeks ago, we found out that that program is now being extended through the end of the school year, which is fantastic, or if the federal government runs out of funding. So every kid can eat a meal for free in school. And the reimbursement rate is $3.065 per week, which is extremely high. So when we saw that, when parents found out that kids couldn't eat school for free, I'm going to jump, which was awesome. We then sent a survey out to families because we wanted to feed students who were either fully remote or kids who were remote on Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays. We wanted to be able to, because we could, feed them through this program, breakfast and lunch. And I believe when I checked, that we had 92 people who had signed up for it. So that caused a spike in our roll, which kind of allowed us to stabilize our numbers, provided that school doesn't close. So we're in a little, we're a better spot than I thought we were going to be back when I presented this in early September. A large part of it due to the fact that the C-list meals program was extended and also to the fact that Lisa Porter had a great job with that remote piece and those 92 kids getting them breakfast and lunch for the five days of the national. That's my brief presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Courtney and Lisa to talk a little bit more about the numbers because it's a little more complicated than I thought.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we're not getting too much of the numbers because we're actually really too early in the year. And, and, and Lisa's really done all the work with our remote piece, actually, the whole thing. She's the food service director. But, and she's really, really just been making up with her, with the remote piece. So it is, Paul stated, just the fact alone with the summer C-list option, that, that amount. Because typically you have the $3.035 for a regular student, say. And that's a high, so that's even beyond that. So we are seeing some good numbers, although, you know, Lisa's still gathering, gathering information as far as participation in the fat major. The only issue that, what Paul said at the beginning, all three of we kept meeting since August, actually, we've been meeting. And we'll be in various options, we'll be in various scenarios. So if something were to need to be addressed, what would our options be? What would we do? We've been, because obviously you need to look at that in advance, you know, waiting till something happens. So we've done, we spend a lot of time with regard to that. The only issue that we do have right now is a cash flow issue, obviously. With regard to the revolving fund. So what I have been doing is charging to the general fund and certainly what we will do is re-class all of that instant revolving fund. Just so you know, Lisa has attended 10, 90, some, she's assigned many DESE committees. In fact, I just talked to Rob Lesch and the Director of Nutrition Services at DESE the other day. He was saying that 463 of the new applications went in, but thousands of new summer, seeing the summer auction sites. So we are really overwhelmed, we are extremely overwhelmed. So as far as the cash flow issue, Lisa can't even, just, just yesterday, I believe, it was a Zoom about the application process. So, you know, obviously she'll apply as soon as she can and we'll start having cash flow and I'll be updating you guys of any new classes. We'll take care of that. That's really all I had to say. Sorry, the issue that we have right now is the cash flow itself. But Lisa can come up and talk about, you know, what's going on with, with the program and the schools, the remote piece and anything else you like that.
A lot of it, you know. But I think, I think basically what I really want to say, that I was really thrilled and I think, you know, probably all of us were thrilled to, to see that they did extend the, you know, the, the food meals to the end of the school year. And hopefully, you know, with, with, you know, the funds, I think it will continue. So I think, and also to see that, you know, that the, the participation had picked up and it continues to pick up. And I think, you know, that, that's a good trend and we can continue, you know, in, in that way, you know, we, we should be okay. And again, it's a, it's a daily process that, you know, it's hoping we don't know, you know, what could happen at any given moment. So, you know, if we continue in this trend, I, I really am not a good help school act program. But, you know, a lot, a lot does remain confusing as to where we're going with this whole thing. So, does anybody have any questions? I think what we, if I really stem up a lot of the information, so.
Something you said, you said, if long as the schools don't close, if the schools close, do we still have the option of feeding kids breakfast and lunch? If everybody goes totally remote, so, so the program can continue.
Totally can continue.
Yes, yes, yep. It would just be a matter of setting them differently than right now, we have in person as well as remote. So if you go totally remote, yeah, then we'll just, you'll, you'll just, you know, adjust to accommodate that.
I have no doubt we can adjust to that. We have to go to feed those kids.
My question was, since we have dealt with snow days, you have, what if it had something happened with snow day, where it was a pickup day? Three days, do you have, do you have a plan for that? Month of the day, did I have one set of meals?
I think that probably, you know, if, you know, in fact, there was a snow day, of course, we don't want people out there. And if you get in trouble, you would just adjust, you know, do what, the next old running city, probably be a problem. Kind of look at that, that situation and problems.
Patrick, we did, we did have that situation last year when we started our, within the short time of our, our programs. Where actually they were, they were saying there wouldn't be hurricane winds and rains just down, there was lots of my business. So I did want to, yeah, so we wanted to, you know, Kevin Means at the time, because he decided with regular. So of course, safely, then we would move it one day and it was actually fine. Nobody minded, no problem.
You didn't want to modify everybody's.
No, not anybody.
What had changed, you know, what that one.
Yeah, no problem whatsoever. We'll definitely keep, keep you posted, obviously.
Yeah, like I said, it is definitely ongoing, definitely, for sure.
I feel lost for you, actually.
So Michael, you know what, I have a question. So when kids pick up their meals, let's say, well, you know, it's going to be the Thursday for the exam, normally it'd be Friday.
Right.
What, what is it that they're picking up?
They're picking up breakfast and lunches. So it's, you know, it's a, a complete reimbursable breakfast meal as well as a completely reimbursable lunch meal. And, you know, for the remote piece, then we're doing, you know, five, five days of meals.
Oh, so like on Fridays, it's like there was a ten that is remote only on Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So probably they're picking up breakfast and lunch for the three days.
And with this, with this C-list option, we are able to include weekends as well.
Oh, wow.
So which is that, that, that's a plus too, because that adds into the, the meal count when you go in for reimbursement.
So, and you know, that's actually helpful for parents that, like myself, that, that work. Because we just don't have time to run the store, do the remote and all that.
Yeah, that's what I'm finding, a lot of this feedback is, yeah, parents are really, really good. You guys, you know, what you're back, you know, it's just, it's really, I'll just like trouble all those, all those times.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to go off a little bit off, that snow day, it was a topic that just came up. The commissioner last week in his Zoom call stated that he's going to allow school districts to use remote days as snow days. So if for whatever reason, we have to shut down school because of snow and we're not able to travel, we can call that a remote day as long as kids can work from home. We don't have to make that up at the end of the year. I think there were 13 grades, pre-8 to 11, who were very, 12 people were very happy about that. I apologize to seniors who this year may not admit those, use snow days in. He did say that, what, we did mention, we talked in the book, what happens if we lose power? And the town goes down a lot of course at the time. If that happens, obviously we can't call that a remote day. And that would be a day that we have to make up in Zoom. So kids probably are going to be asking for no longer snow days because they have to do work, but winter and storm days, because if we lose power, then there's no school doing that. He did say that depending on how big the power outage is out there, you can apply for a waiver to remove that. So in some communities where people might go four, five days without power, they're going to allow some adjustments for that, so.
Hopefully they'll just change that.
This is tough.
Yeah. And then.
That's weird for the concept.
Much better.
Yes.
And then, just to go back off to a couple of things that, that really stand. We've had to adjust, we had, we've learned a lot this past month with kids being back and teachers being back at school. Teachers have done a fantastic job with everybody's activity, just learn and change with the past month. Last week, we had a meeting where a principal brought in some sample remote lessons from their buildings and showed you. They were remarkable. Once these stories were sold, four or five, they were great. The teachers were doing a great job. Last week, I had a Zoom meeting with parents from the four different buildings just to find out what some of the concerns were in, with the hybrid model. And it was pretty interesting to listen to. There were four or five people who said, there's not enough work. And then there were four or five people who said, there's too much work. There were two or three people who said, we're on Zoom too long. And there were two or three people who said, we're not on Zoom long enough. So one of the principals had been working on the teeth, trying to find like all that sweet spots as to how much time people should be spending. So we're adjusting that thing to that from parents. We were professionally going on Friday, the teachers were going to spend the first half. We were professionally going on Friday, the teachers were gonna spend the first half of that PD day, looking at some of the issues that they've identified, some of the issues parents have identified, and coming up with solutions as to how to make those remote days a little more powerful for them, but also a little bit more powerful for families. Um, it was interesting, I, I don't, I didn't, you, any of you on the middle school, Zoom, young middle school, um, one of the concerns that parents got was that, um, teachers were teaching, you know, before, one hour long period. Teachers were teaching for forty-five minutes, and then giving kids about half hour, forty minutes of work to complete, but giving them the last fifteen minutes of class to start. Therefore, kids should theoretically have ten, fifteen, twenty minutes of homework for a class afterwards. What was happening with a lot of kids were, teachers were logging off for Zoom at seven forty-five, eight forty-five, and instead of celebrating the homework immediately, the students were going to the bathroom, getting something to eat, getting lunch, stretching, checking their phones, going on Xbox. Fewer than thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids do, and then the day would end, and they would have forty minutes of homework for class, kind of five or six classes, and then they would spend from two o'clock to six o'clock doing the work. Um, again, which we, we actually, teachers are worried about that. So we understand and we know that there are some issues. It's been less than a month since we started, we started on the twenty-third, right, there will be, um, a month on Friday, that we officially started this morning. So we know we have a two-week, and we're working on that. Um, and the last piece was FY twenty-two budget. Um, Courtney and I, we started having those discussions, I know we talked a little bit about it in previous meetings, and the plan still is to try to have a rough idea of what number, for us to start having some discussions over the next few weeks, and then to work on that number, and get information from principals, directors, um, Mr. Collette, Donna, as to what our budget's gonna look like. Hopefully finalize that sometime in December, January, the week in coming through in February, and start the full budget process, and begin to go into town and work at the town on, um, on what we need for that case. So we're, we're moving forward with that. Um, Courtney's finishing up the year report for FY twenty-one, so she said, Paul, can you please just let me finish that? I'd ask for an extension, can you please just let me finish that before we start FY twenty-two? So he said, he keeps on telling me, it's like, we're three weeks, three weeks away, but Paul, today should be fast, and it might be done Monday, Tuesday. You saw that, it's in the, in the.
Yes.
Yeah. So, are there any questions?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the school committee, so can we put our pens down?
On October eighth, I signed my draft of following two thousand three thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. And on October fifteenth, I signed seven drafts of following twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-two cents.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, the October seventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes, which I'm missing some stuff, because she can't hear us talking to the microphone. I mean, if nobody else noticed, what's on there?
Oh, no, you guys, follow the desk and roll your, all right. I was wondering about Jonathan and Seals, is that the first one of his names? Is that? On page, the first page, the bottom?
This is it.
Okay, great.
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty. You should be okaying. Second by Becky, um, favor, hand, you post. Thank you. We're looking at the, twenty twenty twenty, we're changing.
Looking at the calendar, after we had our first professional zone thing, and one thing I know how I didn't catch it earlier on, in looking at the Mondays and Tuesdays from now until the, um, January one, cohort eight kids were going to nest three days of school, where our cohort B kids were going to nest ten days of school. And if you think about it, we have Thanksgiving Day week, where we don't have, we have school Monday and Tuesday, and we don't have school on Thursday, Friday. And if you look at the first week of Christmas vacation, we're in school Monday and Tuesday, we're not in school on Thursday, Friday. So we had it in bounds. So not, we're obviously not gonna change Thanksgiving, and we're not gonna change the Christmases. But one thing I did notice was that we thought, um, parent teacher conferences scheduled for Thursday the nineteenth and Friday the twentieth. Those are both half-days. So what I'm absolutely committed to approve is to move those half-days from Thursday and Friday, or the nineteenth and twentieth, to Monday and Tuesday, the sixteenth and seventeenth, to allow the cohort B kids a full day in school on Thursday, Friday, that week, as opposed to a half-day in school. In looking at the second half of the year, we have a full day in service on January fifteenth, and we have a half-day on Friday, March nineteenth, just pre-teen to five. We're gonna hold off on doing anything with that yet. I don't wanna make a change, have us be in school, out of school, so right in early December, I'll come back and look at those dates and see where we stand with the pandemic, before we change to the half, or we change back. But right now, I just asked that we move those two conference days, the nineteenth and twentieth, to the sixteenth and the seventeenth, the Monday, Tuesday, to allow the cohort B to be able to school for four days.
What, what is your, um, vision of parent teacher conferences?
What's my vision of parent, so parent teacher conferences will be remote, we do Zoom. So what we would do is, um, just as you would typically sign up for your parent teacher conferences and go and sit down, and we would teach face-to-face in the classroom, that was all we've done, now we are Zoom.
Okay, so, um, getting to a bigger picture here. I've, I've always, since the beginning, I started this school committee, I've always had issues with how parent teacher conferences work, and it's always helped me, it's unfair for many, many people, particularly with their teachers, some get to me, some don't, some don't care, whatever. Especially during this time, I just, I'm just wondering if there's a way where we could give every single person an equal opportunity to meet with their teachers. Um, I'm always hopeful it's not possible, I don't believe that. Um, so I'm just wondering, before we okay this, um, will this allow for that?
No, it won't. So if, if you look at, I think parent teacher conferences are two and a half, I believe, two or two and a half hours. Really, do you know?
I do.
Let's, it's, it's two and a half hours. So if you run that in five-minute segments, you could do twelve an hour, twenty-four two hours, or thirty in two and a half hours. If you're running it in five minutes, it's quick. So in a K two, in a K to five, um, classroom, a teacher can meet with all twenty-four parents in that five-minute segment. Once you get to grades six through twelve, where teachers have seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred different students, and have every parent have the opportunity to meet with teachers for five minutes, you would have to go from two and a half hours to five or seven and a half hours to get a hundred people in. That would require us to sit down with a DTA and renegotiate those nights out and those half-days. I believe my understanding, that the way the contract was written, was that teachers would have parent teacher conferences at night, and then we would give them a half-day, where they would have the three hours in the morning, and then the two and a half hours at night, which would equal their six-hour work day to seven hours of, um, and then have that, that tie-off from ten-thirty to five o'clock when it started. So if we were gonna give parents at the middle school or high school the opportunity for five minutes, we'd have to go from one half-day to three, three to two, if not three half-days.
Okay, so I know that in this one, I don't know how to administrate how we've actually done some whole policy setting, but I'm just wondering, and I'm not saying we have to say yes, but just something to throw out there, if there's one committee for a lottery this year, and then those that don't get chosen, then, then they can go to the teacher, I'm trying to think of some kind of way to do this that's more fair. I guess every year is really volatile, and I feel like there's that disconnect with parents that really wanna meet with their, their teachers, and they just don't get that.
How is that done at the middle school and the high school?
So if you're lucky, and you're the first person to bring home the paper to your parent, the parent grabs the paper, logs online really quick, and gets in. If you're not that person, or if you're the parent that works away from home, and doesn't get home till late, or they don't see their kids' stuff, or they don't have that kind of interaction, they don't know. Um, that's how it's been, so I'm, I mean, they're high kids, the first thing they'll do is, I got the paper, and they're like, oh, we're in the middle, blah, blah, and get in. And by the time you do, it's already generally already booked. But that's what it is, and it's a weird, it's weird to explain it like that, but that's really what it's like, and it's, it's like you got the golden ticket.
So you get the paper on a Monday, it was charred and told at two o'clock, and it goes live at three o'clock? Well, you have two, three, well, you get the paper on Monday, and then it goes live on a Thursday?
No, no, it's like, it's, it's generally sign-up DMF, DMF. Some people make it to other things, but traditionally, that's how they're doing it now, you get your ten-minute blocks.
Okay.
It's just both for the drive, it is kind of like a lottery, I just feel like it's, some people get more than extra in and out.
But is it that day?
It's live, Monday, it's, it's already live.
It's already live?
As soon as you have that one thing in your hand, you can go sign up. If you only can type in that URL, you can go and sign up.
Just, just to provide a little humor, like, is that at all news now? Like, I'm not even broken, this is how serious it is, they will send home, parents will take a picture, and be like, come here, because I had that happen with my daughter, give me in, like, take a picture, so I can go down and look at the picture. But that's what it became, so, and just, you know.
So would it, would it be more equitable if the principal sends something home on a Monday, and made the website live on a Thursday at five PM, so at least give people four days to have that paper, look at the paper, and if you go live at five, six o'clock, hopefully by then most, you get off of it like at nine-thirty in the morning, and you go to work, if you go live at six o'clock, would that create a little more equity?
I, I think in some ways, yes, I just, I feel like, um, yeah, I just, I want, I want something where we can create a little bit more fairness, because I just feel like some people always get left out, and it's, I'm not perfect, because I'm just for the teacher, and I'm often the teacher, but sometimes people don't do that.
I wonder if you could also consider, if people could sign up for one block at a time first, you know, like, this is different. Yeah, pick one subject first, and then after a day, or two days, now that, it's so, oh, okay, I'm a little, my kids have their kind of science, so I'm gonna schedule that person, that's my priority, but then after a day, the, you know, if there's a film, I'm gonna take one of those spots, something like that, so that maybe at least, you can, you can save at least one teacher at a time at the hall, because that might give it to me, kind of, but it's all different, but I wish there was some kind of process. Um, I wish it was more equitable, but I also, like, really that, you know, parent teacher conferences are not the only time to interact with your children's teachers, so if you go, feeling left out, or miss that, you know, or if they, you know, we switch to something like that, when you get to talk to the teacher, but you really want to see if you can see them, and that, and you're true, then like, reach out to them, because the DCA is not gonna, there might come a problem with being in parent teacher conferences for four, five straight, but they're not gonna be able to say, oh, I'm not responding here, you know.
Right, and, and my guess is that, if people were looking for more, that if a parent turned against a parent teacher conferences, and they send a teacher an email and say, I was locked out, I wasn't able to get a call, so please schedule a five-minute phone call to talk about my job, my guess, that most teachers would say, absolutely.
But I think it's different now, because everything has to be remote anyway, whereas before, it was like that initial, just sit down, have them come in socially, you know, because they see that, but it's a little different now, because they're not really in school that much, and not getting that sit-down, so everything's remote anyway. But just, you know, again, not something we have to administrate here, but something for the teacher to think about.
Okay. Any other? The, the five minutes is faster, as soon as you sit down, and you set the ten-minute conferences, at least a little bit longer, but then that minimizes how many people a teacher can see in those, those two and a half hours.
I also wonder if, would then being remote, the high school might get a better turnout, um, because historically, the high school is pretty empty on parent teacher conferences, I think.
Mr. Romano said that for his Zoom sessions that he's had with parents, he's had far greater turnout for those.
Absolutely, I mean, I can't tell you the nights I wandered around the high school on parent teacher thing, you see the same handful of people who don't, so.
And it's a slide, so we have, you know, you start pre-teen, K one, two, it's packed, you know, as the kids get older, it's all this difference, okay?
Any questions?
That was a commentary adjustment, is there any reason to discuss that staff would be unhappy with switching days, or?
I already had a conversation with Mr. Rann, like, did you see any reason why people would have an objection for this? He said it makes, it makes sense, what I talked to the board in this.
So I'll move to approve changing the date to the parent teacher conferences from November nineteenth and twentieth to November sixteen and seventeen.
You should be okaying.
Okay.
Second by Becky. Um, favor?
Aye.
You post? Thank you. Moving on to the school business operational interest report, transparent of the classroom.
Oh, no, there's no, I didn't, I did, well, I was, I didn't report on, you know, various aspects of my research, but, um, well, the working transfers and declassifications are a little bit, we actually just, um, I'm moving forward, and we finally got the FY twenty-one bike immune this last week. So, um, yeah, so things, things are moving along.
Mm-hmm. Moving on to the topic not yet to see. Seeing none, no need for executive session?
Okay.
Small group of teams for, um, group of folks.
Make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-seven PM.
Okay. Motion made by Kelly?
Okay.
This is by Becky, on favor?
Uh, you wanna pose?
Next meeting is on November fourth, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Goodnight, all. Thank you, so goodnight.
Thank you.